Okay, so I'm gonna call this meeting back to order in open fashion. We were meeting an executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiations with unions. I'm gonna begin by reading the provision I have to read, which says pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 38, section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the North Reading School Committee is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. And we're gonna start with taking attendance. So for attendance, I am here, Scott Buckley. The vice chair, Janine Embriano, is here, and Richard McGowan is here as well. Sadly, we are down two people tonight. Well, very positively, Chris Coppa-Vacilio is not able to attend, his wife, and he had a second child this weekend. And so I wish, extend congratulations to Chris and Ally for their child. And Diana Boutwell unfortunately cannot attend. She has family commitments. I'm pretty sure she did not have another child, but but she cannot attend unfortunately. So it's just the three of us tonight. So that is the stuff I have to do. And let's start with public input. So if there's anybody that has anything they would like to discuss that is not on our agenda for the evening, I will pause for a few seconds and let you jump in. Hearing none, we're gonna move on to the student report. And I believe we have Sophia Galupo. Is that how I say it? Glupo, the class of 2022, to provide a student report? Sophia, are you here? Dr. Daly, do we see Sophia? Has signed in?
No, let me double check. Can we?
Yeah, we can come back to her if she's able to attend later on. Okay. And we're gonna move on to the new business then. And so I think we're gonna start, we have an honored guest here, Ms. Amy Luckowicz, Boston College, class of 2001, you know, which she should say every time that she's at the school committee meeting. Here to talk about the Core Measurement Survey Administration.
Sure. Thanks for having me virtually. It's good to see everybody. Obviously, things have changed for this year. As you know, each year we do take core measurement questions related to substance use, our underage substance use within North Reading. We are required by our federal Drug-Free Communities Grant to collect information about four substances. We collected about five because in North Reading, we've decided to separate vaping into its own category. So we asked questions about past 30-day use, perception of risk or harm, perception of peer influence, and perception of peer attitudes, and perception of parental attitudes. Those are the questions that we're required to ask, but we go further than that with the input of Dr. O'Connell and Mr. LaPret. So we ask questions related to age of onset of use, but also questions that they might need for climate survey questions, things about sleep habits or perception of safety among the schools. And we like to lump it all onto one and capture this information in one thing. In past years, we've had, I'm looking at my numbers here, on average, a 95% participation rate, which is extremely high. And I think that's because we take it in the schools. Students are always allowed to opt out entirely. They can also skip questions as they go, so they don't have to answer anything. Not much has changed for the survey presentation this year. Unfortunately, it'll have to be completely digital and just ask the students if they want to participate. I'm anticipating a low participation, especially among grade 12, unfortunately. I've been going back and forth with our federal partners on this, and they are basically telling us that we have no, we can't get out of it, asking it this year. It's a little disappointing that they don't have some flexibility on that, given that our anticipation of accuracy is going to be pretty low. So it's gonna be one of those years where we're probably gonna have an asterisk next to our data. And personally, I'm a little bit bummed about, I'm a lot bummed about this because this will be our fourth year taking data under the grant. It will be our fifth year collecting data, and this is where we start really being able to predict and see some trends and influence of education. So that's a little disappointing. We're gonna likely have a little asterisk next to it, but we do need the school committee's approval. And Dr. Daly, I've given him copies of what Dr. O'Connell and Mr. LaPret have approved and looked through.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Amy.
So those are, I was just gonna say, those are included in your packet. And the, you know, again, the idea is that we will do a few pushes through the principals. I'll put something out, but then also each principal can email students directly if there's any information and offer to put in their daily reminders for parents. So I'm hopeful that we will have a decent turnout. I don't think it's the same as you don't have the vast audience, but I do think, you know, I'm confident that students and parents will take it seriously. I think a lot of people value the data, and the great programs that come from this data. And I think it's something we should support, and certainly, you know.
Thank you very much. We'll kinda go around, since there's only three of us. Rich, any comments or questions? Here, I'm you.
Sorry about that. Is there, I just, I don't have any questions. I just wonder what we can do, what else we can do to promote participation, even with the 12th graders, I mean, you know. How could we be encouraging? I don't have any answers, but.
I'm actually hoping that, you know, the student council will encourage it as well. Social media, it will, because the link is 100% secure and private through Survey Monkey, nobody else has the code to access it. We're hoping that, you know, if we put it out on social media, that we'll get some more participation that way. The concern about that, though, is that anybody could take it from any town. So hopefully, you know, we'll have our student leaders would encourage participation. I forgot to mention, too, that our agreement has always been going back to Mr. Bernard's time, that we will be providing you with the data first before we go and share it further. But I just wanted to remind everybody that the data does come back to the school committee first.
Thank you. Janine, any comments or questions?
Just kinda like to Rich's comment, that, you know, it would be wonderful if we could get the same participation as we have the past years. And if there was any way that anyone could think of to make that happen, that would be wonderful.
Janine, you and I are gonna call every high school student.
I do think that we can, sorry, go ahead.
Nope, please.
I do think that we can also count on the health instructors to put it out through their classes as well, which is great. Here's the other part about us doing it digitally, is that usually I so that one computer can only take it one time, but considering that multiple students in the same household might use the same computer, I have to unlock that, which increases the chance that a student could take it twice. And you'd be surprised how often they go, oh, I didn't take it. They start it again, and they say, oh, I did do this. So I'm just gonna have to be careful about keeping an eye on that. About that, but remind them, just take it once.
Dr. Daly?
I was just saying that, you know, the principals are certainly in support of this, and they will advocate as well. So I think we'll definitely get some good push there. And as we mentioned, the health teachers and health classes as well at 6:12, so.
Thank you. And I should have mentioned, too, it takes on, as we're able to track this, it takes on average six minutes to complete.
Well, I would just add, I mean, I think, I mean, I think we all know Amy pretty well. I mean, she's one of the best advocates. We're so fortunate to have her in our community. And, I mean, she did all the work to get this grant, and it's a significant amount of money. And so it's, you know, it's a really, again, the money is important because it does a lot, a lot of, a lot of good in the community. So it's, you know, it's important that we know, you know, what the needs are. I guess my question, I mean, I looked at all the questions. Everything seemed fine. It was very similar or identical the last year. But I guess my only question is, in terms of COVID-19, I mean, what are you seeing, what are you anticipating with regard to drug and alcohol use with, especially with minors, but overall now that, you know, people are staying at home? I mean, what are you seeing?
This is a great question. This is the number one question I've been getting asked, is what's going on with substance use? And the problem is, it's very, very difficult to tell. We are actually gonna be kind of relying on this survey to give us some of that information. I can tell you that officer responses to overdoses at the adult level are significantly down. I know Detective Lucci has not had many calls for service related to substance use, if at all. I will tell you, though, we are having parents reach out to us directly related to concerns related to vaping and marijuana use. That's a good thing because we're able to provide them with some tests about, you know, if they bring us in a sample of what they have found in their child's room or whatever. But I have to tell you that access is one of those prohibitive factors, and access has gone significantly down. It's ironic that we're meeting today on June 1, because today a historic law went into effect. Massachusetts is the first state in the nation to ban menthol and mint. Menthol and mint, as we know, has become an increasingly popular flavor as the flavor ban had gone into effect almost six months ago. And so where access is changing, although, you know, we do know that some students go up to, and I don't mean to say students, but I mean young people in general, and all ages go up to New Hampshire to make their purchases. But this is, this is gonna be a really interesting, I was hoping to get this data before this went into effect, but obviously that won't happen. So I do think COVID has affected access, and hopefully that's a predictable reduction in use, but we just don't, it's all guess.
Yeah, yeah. Well, okay. Well, clearly, BC did something good with you, and I guess they missed with me, but it's, so we need a motion at this point to approve the administration of the Core Measurement Survey.
I'll make a motion to accept the Core Measurement Survey distributed by Amy Luckowicz.
Okay, so we'll do a roll call. Janine?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And an aye as well. So it passes 3-0.
Thank you, Amy. You're awesome.
Thank you, everybody. And Dr. Daly, I'll reach out to you about the links and updating all that and the verbiage.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And thanks for all you do. You've been, you know, we've worked together for many years, but this year now, superintendent, I've been a part of some committees, several committees that we run. And I know Janine signed some of those with me as well. And so thank you for your continued support for all of us. It's really very much appreciated.
Thank you. And if you pass along our thanks to Dr. O'Connell and Mr. LaPret, I appreciate that as well. Have a great afternoon or evening.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Okay, excellent. Patrick, Dr. Daly, did Sophia join?
I'm not sure. Sophia, are you on the line? I might need to unmute yourself if you're here.
It's star six unmuted, I believe.
Yeah, star six. Yeah, I may, I didn't get a confirmation, Mr. Buckley, so there's a possibility that the message didn't get received.
Okay.
So we may just do a double one next time.
Yeah, I'm guessing remote learning's happening.
Yes.
And, okay. So we will turn it over now. We're gonna have the presentation from Steve, I believe, McManus, about the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. Steve, are you here?
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Thank you very much. So as Scott said, my name is Steve McManus, and I'm the president of the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, CPAC. I'm here today to talk about who we are, how we've been active in the past year, and what our goals are for next year. So our duties include, but are not limited to advising the district on matters that pertain to the education and safety of students with disabilities, meeting regularly with school officials, participating in the planning, development, and evaluation of the school district's special education programs, and advocating for the appropriate supports and special education services necessary to meet individual needs of children with disabilities living in the district, and to ensure that each child receives the individualized supports and special education services that such child is entitled to under applicable federal and state laws and regulations. Students that fall into this category have been determined to have a disability, and that disability requires specialized instruction. We've had a busy year and continue to serve as a resource, not only for the special ed community, but for the general population as well. Our involvement with the district actually started off last summer when I served on the committee to interview candidates for the superintendent. It was an honor and privilege to represent the special education community. And of course, we were very happily with the ultimate selection. So nice to be presenting to you, Dr. Daly. A focus of our group is to provide programming for a wide range of ages and concerns. Once a year, we are required to hold a Basic Rights and Special Education workshop. And with the support of the PPS Department, our CPAC is a paid member of the MAS PAC, which is the statewide coalition of individualized CPACs, which is under the umbrella of the Federation for Children of Special Needs. As part of this membership, we had a speaker from that group and present to us on the topic of transition services for youths with disabilities, focused more on the older students, ages 14 to 22, as transition planning is sort of mapping out what is gonna look like for students after they age out of school services. It's been a goal of ours for several years to have a workshop tailored to older students. A lot of our attendees tend to be families that are new to the system, so we definitely wanted to gear programming towards older students. And it was a really good workshop that a lot of families requested. Unfortunately, the virus situation interfered with our second workshop of the year, which was originally scheduled for March and then for May, but unfortunately never happened. The topic was MCAS and how children with disabilities can participate in meaningful ways in the MCAS testing. There was a lot of demand for this workshop, so hopefully it'll be able to be rescheduled in the future. The highlight of our year, I would say, was an event literally a year and a half in the making. At one of our parent social events last fall, so a year and a half ago, one of the parents commented that the town of Melrose lights up their town common in blue lights every April for Autism Awareness Month, and how nice it would be if we could do something like that in North Reading. Well, thanks to the tireless efforts of our parent volunteer Jill Gatsby, the gazebo in town common was lit blue this April. Jill did a fantastic job organizing the entire event and worked with Cynthia Conant, Town Administrator Michael Giliberto, Select Board Vice Chair Stephen O'Leary, Building Superintendent Mark Hamel, and Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations Michael Conley, and Flint Memorial Library Youth Services Technician Librarian Danielle. There was actually gonna be a display in the youth services room of the library with books related to autism and special needs, but, you know, obviously, the library was closed for the month of April. So there was even an article about our program and a picture of the gazebo on the front page of the transcript above the fold. So many thanks to Jill for organizing that event. You know, hopefully, we have the structure in place that, you know, we purchased the equipment, so we have the lights and extension cords and timers. She did a lot of fundraising for that. So we should hopefully have the structure in place to be doing that every year going forward. Last but not least, I'd like to thank Dr. Patrick Daly and, of course, for the first half of the year, Mr. Bernard and his staff for their support. I've been attending his monthly meetings of the superintendent's Parent Advisory Council, and Dr. Daly and his staff have been nothing but supportive. In addition, I'm also very happy to say that we've had a collaborative and positive relationship with Pupil Personnel Office, and special thanks to Cynthia and her staff for their time, support, and guidance. I also want to thank Vicky Labriola, who's been serving as really the co-chair for the last, we've been working together for seven or eight years or so, and she's done a ton of behind-the-scenes work. She maintains the website. She maintains the Facebook page. And I'm gonna correct myself. A lot of the work she does is not behind the scenes, but very much at the forefront. So Vicky works very hard for our group as well. In terms of what our goals for next year, it's time for us to search for new members of our board. Like I said, Vicky and I have been doing this for a long time, and we're gonna step back and look for other parents who are able to volunteer and sort of take the reins, so to speak. So we've started looking, you know, we posted on Facebook to search for volunteers. Hopefully, we'll find some people to come in and help us out. It's obviously a great town, a great school district, and a great organization. So we definitely want to keep our momentum going forward.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Steve. I will say, typically, when something is posted in the Community Connection page, there's a lot of discussion, but I think all you have to do is ask for somebody to volunteer and run the CPAC, and it tends to be crickets in that post. I just want to thank you for all the work that you've done. I want to leave, I want to let, you know, Rich and Janine comment as well, but just, you know, thank you and Vicky for all that you've been doing. Rich or Janine, Rich, you have any comments or thoughts, questions?
No. I guess, no, certainly not based on the report. I would say that it was a pleasure working with Steve on the search committee last summer. God, that feels like a decade ago, doesn't it?
It really does. I thought that when I was typing this out.
But yeah, no, I would echo the comments, Scott comments, thanking you guys for your work over the years. I do think that it feels like we don't have extra people stepping up, but usually people will step up when when other people are stepping down. So hopefully, you'll find some folks to step in.
Yeah, another angle that Vicky and I are willing to help people with is, you know, if there's a group of like three or four parents that want to tackle it together, that can, I've seen other towns do that, other CPACs where it's not really, I mean, obviously, there's a board and there's titles, per se, but, you know, like I said, Jill, Jill did more work this year on the Light Up Blue Initiative than, you know, she put in the most work of the CPAC this year. So it doesn't, you know, it doesn't have to be just like one person doing everything. Jill's done a ton. Vicky's done a ton. And, you know, there's a lot of parents who are very involved.
Great. Janine, any comments or thoughts?
Steve, it's gonna be very sad to see you go. You've been a steadfast person for, gosh, as long as I can remember. You're always there. You're always brilliant. You're spot on in everything that you do. So thank you for all that you've done, and I wish you the best, and I hope someone does step up and take your position and can fill the shoes that you are leaving behind.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It's been a pleasure working with you as well.
Yeah, I mean, I, Cynthia, just one second, then I'll let you and Dr. Daly, I'm sure Monica will talk as well. But yeah, I mean, Steve, I would just say, like, I think there's a need also for CPAC, just talking about CPAC in general. I think one of the main concerns when, you know, when we're talking and Dr. Daly's talking, I know a lot of times the main concern people have is that, you know, with the time away, what's this gonna do to our students, especially kids that are on IEPs already, special needs students? Will there be more people that need services? And so it's a very important thing. I mean, as a father of a son with special needs, and actually, my daughter's also on an IEP. I mean, I appreciate it. You know, you are an amazing, you know, president of CPAC, but you're also just an amazing, amazing guy. And so, you know, you've done so much for us. But, you know, there is very much a need. So if people are listening that are interested in getting involved, I mean, you know, these are some of the most vulnerable students in our population. And so it's great to have people that step up to think about, you know, those students. So and sorry, Cynthia. Go ahead, Cynthia.
That's okay. Thank you so much. Steve, I just want to say that these last five years have been an absolute pleasure to work with you. We were able to develop a collaborative partnership. We worked together to bring informative and relevant presentations to the families of North Reading. And I'm so grateful to have had the opportunity to work alongside of you, because it's been one of the highlights of the five years of my time in North Reading. You know, and what I will say about the relationship between student services and a CPAC is that when you do have a collaborative partnership, it sets the foundation for growth and progress moving forward in a district. And this has really been the essence of the partnership we have established in North Reading under your leadership. And for this, I'm very grateful, and I don't take it for granted at all. So thank you so much. It truly has been a pleasure.
Oh, thank you very much. I appreciate it. It's definitely been one of the highlights and things I'm most proud of as well, is how well our entire board works with you and your team.
Yeah, it's really been great.
If I could just echo those comments, too. I've worked with you in a few different capacities over the years. And just the communication has always been great, the flexibility. I've worked with you from everything, from planning events to showing videos, to getting computers to work, to coming up with creative outside-of-the-box ideas. And, you know, I think anyone that serves our community and serves our students for any time in any capacity is so commendable and noteworthy. But to do so for eight years is just something that I really think just deserves special recognition. And I really, I really do want to thank you. Stephen, I just want to ask, when you started, did you know a lot about CPAC, or do you feel like someone who's just, you know, maybe has a child, they want to get involved, they want to advocate for their child, that they could step up into a leadership role? Or do you feel like you need a lot of experience in that to get started?
That's a good question. You know, I think when I started, you know, so Patrick was six and Matthew was four. And so we'd been involved with the school system for a couple of years, which I think was helpful, you know. So I knew some of the staff members. I had a couple couple of years of, you know, IEPs and team meetings and, you know, quarterly reviews under my belt. And I think it would, I don't know if I could have volunteered to be this involved in the CPAC, like, right after the boys started on their IEPs or got their diagnosis. You know, that is enough of a hurdle, at least for me personally, to tackle it once, you know. And I remember when Vicky and, you know, Pam McIntyre, the vice chair, when we took over from Kathleen Moline, she said, well, I started when my son was like six or seven, and now he's a teenager. So I feel like it's good to have parents of elementary school kids, you know, kind of doing the CPAC. And that's how she said she felt when we took over is exactly kind of how I feel right now. You know, it's, we've been doing it for a while. I think every organization benefits from a change in leadership. And you know, I think it's, it's good to, like I said, good to have some knowledge. But everybody's different. Just what worked for me might not work for another parent or, you know, another guardian.
I appreciate it, and we look forward to continuing the great relationship and then to build upon the strong foundation that you've partnered with our school system. So thank you so much.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure. It's a great district. It really is.
Yeah, and just to reiterate again, I mean, it's, you know, if there are parents out there that are interested in trying to get involved in the schools overall, I mean, it's a great, great way to do it. You know, you get to meet a lot of people in the school district as well. And for Steve and Vicky, now, we would have, we wanted to be able to be in person, but we do want to recognize your years of service. And so, you know, pretend that we are shaking your hand right now and presenting you with, we'd like to present you guys each with a school committee award of appreciation, you know, and take a picture that would hopefully be above the fold in the transcript as well. But we'll have to mail it to you and meet you another time. But, you know, we really do, you know, appreciate the efforts that you've put in. I mean, it's a lot of work, and, you know, it's a very vulnerable population. So I mean, I think it means, you know, it means a great deal for a parent to step up. And so for both you and Vicky, because I know she's also trying to step down, we very much appreciate your efforts over the years.
Mr. Buckley, if I may, just read the, what was written. So it says, "For Mr. Steve McManus, has been a great leader and organized many events for the CPAC in his years as the leader of this parent group. I've had the pleasure of attending several meetings while participating in events that Stephen has facilitated. He's been a pleasure to work with and always solicited the feedback and support of the district in every decision. His focus was on helping parents and students and did so much to build bridges and foster relationships within our school community." So it reads, "Mr. Steve McManus, for his eight years of service to the students and families of North Reading as president of the Special Education Parent Advisory Council." And for Ms. Labriola, we have something very similar. And hers is that she's been a great leader and organized many events for CPAC in her years as the leader of the parent group. She's been a pleasure to work with, and she did many things behind the scenes, including the development and maintenance of the CPAC website. For eight years of service to the students and families of North Reading, website. For eight years of service to the students and families of North Reading, through her work with the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. So those are official awards that will be sent to you in the near future. And whether we're handshaking at any point, hopefully we may replace that with bows or something, but we do want to thank you in any way possible.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And I know Vicky does as well.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Steve. And thank you, Mrs. Cohen, for coming as well. I mean, I know that, I know that, you know, you've been very active in this, you know, that this pandemic as well. And, you know, you know, you get to talk to Dr. Daley and Mr. Conley a lot, but we don't get to talk to you as much. I would just like to say, like, even though we're going to be transitioning to budget in a little bit, I do know that one of the ways that we're closing the gap is that various leaders in this district are taking on a lot more. I do know that, you know, one of the positions that's, you know, not going to be rehired, is going to be restructured is in your department, which will obviously put more on you. And I know that next year is going to be a lot of work for, for you as well. So I think we all really very much appreciate the efforts that you're putting in as well.
Thank you, Scott. I appreciate that. And you know what? We're a team, you know, all of us, we work together, you know, we do what we have to do for the best interest of the students and for the district. And, you know, I feel like we're prepared moving into next year. We know the work that lays ahead and we're ready to do that. So I appreciate your words.
I'd just like to say, we are so blessed to have all of the administrative team because you guys are awesome and you just don't stop. So thank you. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I would agree. Just, this is the first time you've been on Cynthia. So thank you for all you did right from day one with the remote learning plan. You had all those frequently asked questions. You were out ahead of it at every step of the way and really made this a seamless transition to something very different as possible. And now I know that you've been spending so much time making sure our summer services go off without a hitch and we really appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you, Patrick. We're a team. We all do this together. So it's, you know, it's great working on the team in North Reading. That's, I can't say that enough.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, we're all hearing stories of other districts and this and that. And I'll just say, I mean, you know, we've been so fortunate in North Reading with who we have. And I mean, I think when we hired Dr. Daley, one thing that he talked a lot about and we talked a lot about was we have a great team here, you know, already, and a lot of it is just keeping that team together. And so you are welcome to stay for the lifetime of your, of your employment if you'd like. So.
Thank you. Thank you. I think this is being recorded, you know.
You are, you are, you are a joy to work with. And so it's, you know, professional and yeah, it's been great. So.
Likewise. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Stay healthy, everyone.
You too. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Take care.
We're going to move on into an update on COVID-19 and I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Daley.
Thank you very much. So there's a few items to discuss tonight. We are still, we're continuing with our remote learning phase. We're coming into June now, obviously the last three weeks of school. I've had the pleasure to check in with a few classes recently. I met with the student council last week and the high school was able to touch base just to hear some, some ideas and some thoughts from every grade level, nine, 10, 11, 12. I asked the students, I said, what's going to be different once it's summer? And they said, well, it's good, you know, this, I actually sensed a little bit of like, they like having something to check in on and someone to do every day. And they, they're very used to this schedule. And in some ways, they're, they're still very much engaged. I joined a classroom today, high school biology classroom, and it was phenomenal just to see the attendance, the numbers. I mean, this, this is certainly not happening everywhere. And I want to say a shout out to our administration and our teachers and our parents and our students for keeping kids engaged and really digging in and having great discussions, you know, I think it's, it's clear that you're not able to maybe get into everything that you may have covered in the curriculum or maybe not to go as deep. However, they're still getting in there. They're still going deep. Our kids are still learning. They're learning new content. They've, they've moved ahead and they're, they're doing a great job. And, you know, I certainly learned a lot today just from the 20 minutes or so of that presentation. So the kids are really benefiting and they all have such positive things to say about the encouragement of their teachers. And, you know, I got another email today, right, right before this meeting from a parent, talking about a kindergarten parent who's just going out of her way to make connections. And she described how she's got the big screen TV in the house with the Zoom meeting on so that other children in the house can also watch and hear from some teachers. I mean, it's just, it's great to hear how North Reading educators are just going above and beyond. And I think that's, that's outstanding. And I really want to thank all of our folks. We've started sort of following the governor's orders. We started our phased return to work. We've had a lot of employees who've been working remotely and some have been coming into the office in staggered shifts. We have a sort of a more formalized process that started today at all of our office spaces. So our buildings are somewhat returning to more operational hours. I've kind of jokingly said, it's been nice to have someone to talk to today, you know, it's, it's different. It's certainly different having folks in the office and, you know, how to share a copy machine and how to wipe it down and use gloves. And so there's a lot of guidance. We're following all the state recommendations. We had our meetings this morning. We have hand sanitation stations in the, in the spaces. We're still not having parents and students come into the buildings, but we're organizing our pickups. That's being done at every level. High school's done some of their pickups first, now middle school and elementary are organizing theirs as well. So we've been able to get valuables, belongings, student work, student possessions into the hands of the families. We're able to collect textbooks, library books, Chromebooks, things like that that need to come back. So that's all being communicated out through the schools. The principals have been fantastic with their plans, very well organized. And again, keeping those within health and safety guidelines as well, keeping the, the numbers under 10 at one time, making sure we're not having a large event to gathering and following all those recommendations. So quite a lot of progress there. Mr. Buckley and I, along with Mr. Lepret, have been very much involved with the town officials, with the town officials talking about graduation. It's been a lot of discussion. We had a wonderful plan in place that was ready to go. And we got thrown a little bit of a curve ball when Department of Ed guidelines came out at three o'clock on a Thursday, we had to kind of go back to the drawing board. We currently have, as Mr. Lepret has communicated out, a three phased approach with three really exciting events for our seniors. In addition to the amazing things, I want to make sure that I credit what parents and community members are doing. If you've driven by, you can see the great posters and banners that are on the fence outside of the turf field. We've had other parents doing things like putting together videos and just so many different events that that have been done and organized. Our parent council at the high school, Ms. Prone, has been such a great job of helping to filter a lot of these great ideas and collect them and, and make sure that all the great ideas are being, are being shared, lawn signs, all the way up to other ideas for graduation ceremonies themselves. But what we have planned is event number one is going to be yearbook and diploma distribution with the ability for students in small groups with their family to take some memorable photos against a great backdrop. So that's sort of one of the first events. That'll be in early June. The second event will be a rolling rally, which will be in June 20. And that event will be, more information coming soon on that as well. And then the third event will be, and this is what changed recently, we were going to still try and plan for some kind of a field-based commencement ceremony that will have to be on or around July 19. Has to be after that date, according to the guidance that came out. But that event will be as close to possible of having some of the things that were really important to the students and to the school, to preserve some of those elements of, of graduation in a face-to-face setting as opposed to virtual. It's certainly going to look different than it has in other years. There's going to be a lot of guidelines and restrictions in place for safety, but I think that we can create some really memorable experiences for our students and our, you know, I'd be remiss to say that our student, you know, our student class president, senior class president, Emily Cooperstein, and all of the class officers have been meeting regularly with Mr. Lepret, along with their advisors, Ms. Gagnon, Mr. McIntosh, Mr. Hayne, as well as Mr. Lepret. I've checked in on several of those meetings and there's just some really great ideas that are, that are being shared. And I, I look forward to these memorable events for our seniors. It's not easy. There's a lot of discussion, a lot of conversation, a lot of questions, but I think we have a really great plan that we've arrived at. And we've been very careful to make sure we didn't put anything out there before we were able to know that we could deliver it in a safe way. So we appreciate everyone's patience as we communicate that information out. I believe those are all the updates that I have. Mr. Conley, anything that you wanted to share as a COVID-19 update?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Daley. Just really briefly, you know, there's, there's a lot of good work continuing to happen on the food service realm with the meal service grab and go program. I think everyone is well versed that we continue to serve breakfast and lunch on a ongoing basis. The staff, food service associates and workers under Anna McGovern and Charles' leadership has been doing an exceptional job. I was going to reference this a little bit later, but I just think it's really impressive that in the month of May, the food service program served 10,160 meals, you know, to the, to the students and to the community during the month of May. So that's, that's an exceptional accomplishment. A lot, a lot of good work and hard work has gone into that program. And it's certainly going to yield a good amount of federal, federal revenue in return as well. So certainly, certainly a lot of good work happening there. I was, did a little bit of a walkthrough for the first time in Ohio through the, through the buildings today, at least at the high school and the middle school. And the custodian staff is in and working hard and they're making actually some really, really good progress around the buildings as well. So certainly appreciate everyone's efforts on the facility and the food service end as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any, Dr. Daley, you have more things or do you want to see if there's any questions first?
You can take questions that I was going to share a little bit about the MOUs from the.
Yeah. And so, so Mrs. Embriano, any, any comments or questions?
I guess I was just, well, further information maybe, but it doesn't sound like you can kind of divulge that stuff at this point in time. So kind of interested to see what's going to happen. So it's awesome.
You mean like the date, like you're texting me the date of graduation, the last one?
I got some, I'm just reading my text to you. I got, ooh, yeah. No, I just have some stuff going on around that time, but that's not a discussion for right now. So that's okay.
We have a working group, as I mentioned, that's been fantastic. And so there's a few things to work out. The first logistical piece, the, the police officers, the North Reading Police Department is working on the parade routes for the rolling rally. And then the part two is going to be the safety and focused guidelines for that. So there'll be a lot more information coming out to students and to others about that. I know that there's going to be some great coverage from the transcript from NORCAM of graduation and events. And then also, you know, we're going to make sure we work with them to get some good coverage of these events as well. So as soon as it's developed, we're going to be sharing this widely so that folks can, can join in and learn more.
Okay. Mr. McGowan, any comments or questions?
I don't know. Thank you.
And, and for me, it's just a couple of quick things. Like, I would just like to reiterate what, what Dr. Daley said. It's been a pleasure working with the community leaders about trying to put this on. I know the public wants specific information, but I think the reason we haven't put things out too quickly was because this is literally the third different plan that has been out there for graduation. And so, you know, even looking at what date in July, who knows what's going to happen this summer. And so I think there's a hesitation to say this is the date. And then, you know, DESE comes out and says, actually, it can't be the date. It has to be later. I think the goal is to do it as, you know, as soon as we can as possible, because we want to make sure that seniors are able to attend and they haven't gone off to college or, you know, started orientation somewhere else. But, you know, it's not that we're not, we understand people want to make plans, but it's just trying to make sure that they don't get canceled. The only question that I have, Dr. Daley, a couple of people have actually asked me, with the, with the phased opening now, the tennis courts at the high school, are those going to be open to the public this summer now? Because I believe tennis is one of the approved activities. And a couple of you have actually asked me that.
Yep. And we've had a few calls as well. They will be open later this week. What happened with the, with the, the fields for the town was part of the regulation said that you had to have, you had to be members of the same household to play tennis or to engage in different sports. And so the question just became, how do we monitor that? We didn't have any staff. We didn't have anyone there to make sure that was done. So the way we've, we've approached that with the town, we worked in conjunction with the town and they're printed up some signs. And we're going to certainly put them up there as the regulation is that you need to be following the, the agreed upon rules that are in accordance with the, the governor's phase. And so those will be posted and they will be open for folks to engage with. So some of the fields are open, but some of the equipment still to be open. And then playgrounds is sort of in a different phase. I believe playgrounds are in phase three. So there'll be a little bit more information coming on that soon. But you can tell folks with the, with the tennis courts that they will be open, I believe, later this week. I was talking to Mr. Hardaker about that today. So we have the signs ready to go. We're ready to open those up. We just wanted to make sure we had all the safety guidelines in place before they were able to open up.
Great. Thank you very much. And, and I know we're going to talk about the MOUs in a second, but do you want to also talk about the task force? Or did you want to mention that now?
Yeah, I did. So thank you. So, you know, we were talking about graduation. We're talking about the last three weeks of school, getting through what's going to be different about the end of this year. I know there's communication coming from the principals about what, things like placements of students, grades, we have some very creative ideas. We want to preserve as much as possible. Some of the, you know, we're very, very attuned to the social emotional wellness of our students and some of the, the feelings that they have, that they have not quite had closure with their current classes this year and, and some of the difficulty and some of the concerns about transitions for next year. So we have a lot of things in place to try and ensure that no matter what school looks like in the fall, that some of these things will be addressed as far as transitions and friendships and peer groups. And so that there'll be something coming forth very soon from the principals about some of these ideas. But we do ask, and we will be asking those letters to extended patients from parents, things that are typically communicated at this time of year, including, you know, who your teacher may be for the fall or different class assignments. It goes very similar for all the, the teachers and the paraprofessionals. We've also discussed that, you know, things like schedules, there's so many questions to be answered, that some of that information may be a little bit later this year than, than it has been in the past. And we ask for folks' patience. And people, for the most part, are very understandable. If there's a concern, you can always reach out to the principal. But I think people just need to understand that there are many questions that, that are involved. And so one of the things that, you know, there, there are many, many questions. I've been meeting very regularly with superintendents. I have a call with the commissioner again tomorrow morning to, to address more of the questions that we have. There is a task force of the Department of Ed that is going to form some guidance for reopening and give us some support as we think about what that reopening could look like. That should be coming in mid-June. But to be out ahead of that, I want to have a task force in North Reading. Our administrative team is obviously involved in this and we're talking about this constantly. But I'd like to have a representative group with, with stakeholders from various groups. So I'm thinking that, you know, I have a parent advisory council already with a lot of stakeholders there. I'd like to have some school committee members involved in a subgroup, a few administrators, some of our teacher leaders, and some representatives from various groups in the, in the district to talk about all the different questions we have at this point. And then obviously to develop a plan and to proof a plan and to, and to proof and give feedback on a plan for reopening in the fall. So that's something I'm going to be planning. And if, if you feel that it's appropriate to have school committee members, I think that might be a good idea to have at least one member on there, if not two, to voice their, their ideas and concerns that they're hearing in the community.
Excellent. Yeah. I mean, I, I personally think that we should absolutely have one or two school committee members on there. I mean, I would be interested if other people aren't, but I'm in a bunch of other things already. And so I won't monopolize it. And two of our members aren't here. So I think we can maybe wait, maybe we wait till May 22nd to decide on, on who does what. But yeah, I mean, I think it's a great idea. I think the key thing is, I think when COVID-19 hit, it was just survival for the first couple of weeks. Then it was slowly getting plans in place. I think, you know, what's nice is now that we're going to have a little bit of time, even though we don't know exactly what it's going to look like. I mean, I really hope that we can present something that is, you know, is positive. I mean, I remember when you did your interview talking I mean, I remember when you did your interview talking about how schools are changing overall and, you know, kind of reorganizing and maybe, you know, having more time in schools, more collaborative time. And there's lessons that happen outside of school. And that was something that happened that you were mentioning in your superintendent interview. And I think, you know, I'm excited to see if there's ways in which we can, you know, maybe move some of those ideas forward and actually be a positive, you know, rather than just something we have to deal with, like kind of like take ownership of it and say, this is actually a better way of doing things. So I think it's great to have involvement from other people.
I think it's great. I'm hearing a lot of that feedback from our teachers. Certainly, certain things are exhaustive in a lot of ways and very different. But I'm also hearing a lot of the positives as well, that, you know, new tools, new, you know, recordings of screens, recording of reading, interacting with students in different ways, some of these hybrid things that I've long believed that the hybrid model is actually the best education possible. You can kind of get the best of both worlds. I think at the K-12 level, it's sort of maybe like an 80/20 or 70/30, face-to-face heavy with some online component. But I think this has opened that right up to, you know, I think I might have said in my interviews that, you know, I don't see myself retiring from the same kind of a K-12 school that we're in right now. And I had no idea that three months later, right, we'd be in a very different world. But we certainly kicked it into gear and we learned a lot. And I think there's a lot of positive. We use that expression a lot, taking lemons and making lemonade. And I think, you know, that's the question moving forward is what, you know, what lemonade can we bring into the fall, right? And there's some positives there as well.
Do you have concerns that, well, let me say it different. So our next meeting isn't until the 22nd. Are you thinking you'd like to get this group sort of together faster than that? I mean, we don't, we have some time, but we don't really have a lot of time.
Yeah, I'm certainly going to promote the group and get the group to meet. We don't necessarily need to have the school committee, you know, I could just invite the chair and the vice chair to the first meeting or something like that, you know, if we don't have time to officially appoint people, I think we could do something like that. I probably wouldn't want to be the last. I'd probably like to have at least one meeting before school officially ended, Rich, which I, Mr. McGowan, which I think is a good, maybe that's what you were thinking, but I would like to have at least one meeting before then. So if we weren't prepared to put two people officially on there, I could have someone sort of informally come to the first meeting. And then from there, we could have the permanent nominees or something, possibly.
Scott, do you want to maybe take a little temperature of the other two members?
Yeah, absolutely. I think we can, yeah.
I don't think this has to be a formal appointment at a meeting, I guess is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. I think, again, I think it's something that we can, I don't think there's anything that has to be, you know, necessarily in public media. I think we could just say that if anybody's interested in doing this, you know, kind of update the members that aren't here and see. And I think, I think one thing that's good about our committee is we try to balance a load a little bit and, you know, both to provide opportunities to people to do things that they're interested in doing and also to, you know, share the burden a little bit. So again, for something like that, I mean, if it's something I had no interest in at all, I'd be happy to say that Chris and Diane are on the committee. But as I actually have some interest in it, I think we should, you know, see what people's thoughts are, so.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, thank you very much. And Dr. Daly, do you want to set up the memorandum, memorandums, what we were discussing in the executive session?
Yes, I do. And just to avoid some confusion, I know if folks want to see this document, they can certainly request them from us as a public document. I did do the courtesy of sending an email to the transcript as well, because I know that they like to see a copy of what's being discussed. So that was sent just recently. But essentially, we've, you know, we really want to take a moment to thank our bargaining units. Each unit has, in their own way, depending on their various situations and the, you know, it's unique to each group what they were asked to give back in this time of closure. We considered, you know, what the incentives were and also what, you know, what has been asked of some of these folks during the closure as far as working time. And, you know, we really needed to consider that, as I've said from day one, you know, when this all went down, I posted, you know, in our frequently asked questions that we would do everything in our power to keep people whole with their regular salary. And that was despite the extended closures beyond the first initial two weeks to now for the full year. That was despite loss of revenue in different areas. That was despite many other schools furloughing, riffing, reducing their force of staff. We were able to keep everyone whole through the end of the year. And when we got to this last vote, we knew that we needed some additional givebacks in order to make that possible through the end of the school year. And so we went to our groups. The three groups that I'm sharing with you tonight are the food service group, the paraprofessionals and the custodians. And so we discussed the agreements with those groups who were very willing. And so, you know, we really wanted to just take a moment to recognize each group, to thank them for their, for what they've given back. What they're giving back supports the ability for all of our staff to remain whole. And it also allows us to have funds in a very difficult budget year, which we'll be discussing more tonight, to be able to stay solvent and move forward and do what's best for kids with the funds that we need to provide those services. So we really are thankful to those groups. And I think we would just need a motion for each to accept the terms of the agreements with each unit.
And I would just add on that, I mean, we are all in this together. We are all trying to find a way to keep people as whole as we can. The, you know, different contracts have different provisions in them. But the general idea here is that, you know, the three contracts we're talking about included, you know, wellness benefits if vacation time's not used, vacation buybacks, which these bargaining units are all willing to, you know, forego the wellness benefits, forego, you know, give back vacation day, you know, not buyback vacation days. And so the total, the total savings to the district is going to be just short of $35,000, which is, you know, again, it's a significant amount of money from, again, and that's, some people might say $35,000, but these are not huge bargaining units either. And so that's a significant amount of money from, you know, some of the smaller bargaining units. And so we very much appreciate the, you know, the collaboration from these unions.
And in a previous meeting, we discussed the teachers, many things that they did in addition. If you think about the coaches and things like that, we gave back, you know, 85% of the coach's salary as well. So every unit has given something or done something. And so we really appreciate what they've done.
Before we take votes, any other comments, Richard or Janine?
I'll just say real appreciation to the various bargaining units. You know, I guess we can chalk some of that up to the generally good relationship we've had with these units over the years. Hopefully that's, I think that's probably led to some of the goodwill that we're experiencing on both sides now, so.
And pretty much to what Richard said, you know, we have a really good community and we have a really good body of employees, be it, you know, custodial, food work, teachers, administrative. And I think that, you know, we all work very well together and I appreciate everything that they've done.
I mean, ultimately, this savings helps us to keep people employed, to keep, more than anything, it helps us to provide services that are needed to the school, to the children in this district. And so, you know, we appreciate everything that's been done by everybody. I mean, the parents as well. We're going to talk at the end about, you know, gifts and donations from parents. So everybody's pulling together on this, which is great. So we're going to have to take motions on the various, you know, memorandums or a recommendation. So I think why don't we start with a motion to accept the memorandum of understanding for the custodian unit?
Sure, I can do that. I move that the committee vote to accept the memorandum of agreement between North Reading Public Schools and the AFSCME Council of 93 Local 1703 Custodian Unit dated June 1st.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? We'll do a roll call vote. Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, so it passes three to zero. Rich, you want to go with the paraprofessional next?
Sure, I move that this committee vote to accept the memorandum of understanding between the North Reading Schools and the North Reading Federation of Paraprofessionals Local 4972.
I'll second.
Again, any discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, passes three, zero again. And then for the food service workers, I think we're just going to, you know, I guess, accept the agreement that's been made or something along those lines, Rich?
Yes, I would move that the committee vote to accept the agreement outlined in the letter from the district, from Dr. Daly, to the North Reading Food Service Associates.
Second, well done, Rich.
Excellent. Any discussion on that? Roll call vote. Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, passes three, zero. So thank you, everybody. Thank you, unions, for working with us and helping us continue to provide the services. Okay, so I think that closes the school closure update. Now we're going to move to the budget vote, which is, we actually have, I think, positive, relatively positive news on this. Mr. Connolly, do you want to present on the budget?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Buckley. I'm going to attempt to share my screen. I have a brief presentation to provide some context to the budget. Is everyone seeing my screen?
Well, some people are on the phone. Let's make sure we voice over this as well while we're...
Great. So we did get some positive news just before the meeting started. We've been certainly working very collaboratively with the town administration, with the select board members and chairs and vice chairs, various boards and committees that make up the finance planning team. We've certainly been very appreciative of the efforts that have gone into this process under some challenging circumstances, some level of uncertainty and unknowns that have probably been certainly unprecedented. And there's been some really good, healthy discussion by both the town and school officials to try to put our heads together and narrow the budget gap. And I think we've come to, you know, probably the best place we could be at this stage to attempt to vote a balanced budget this evening. So what I'm going to do is kind of walk through some highlights of the budget and starting off by just refreshing everyone's memory of what our original recommended budget was. So you can see that we started out this process recommending a budget just by of $33.2 million, $33,199,530. It was a four and a half percent increase over the FY '20 budget appropriation, which was a little bit more than 1.4 million. Based on the revised revenue plan, hot off the press as of about six o'clock this evening on June 1st, the revised budget gap is just over $672,752. So, you know, the budget gap is a little bit more than 2.1% of what we originally recommended, which was that four and a half percent budget. So we certainly, that's, we've certainly been working hard, trying to identify some revenue and look at this as creatively as we can. And, you know, this number was as high as, for instance, $950,000, just a short seven to 10 days ago. So the fact that we've really worked hard to reduce this number, to get it to where it is, is a lot of good work on the part of many folks, you know, mainly the town officials, Michael Goberto and Elizabeth Rourke, board members. So we certainly are very appreciative of their efforts.
And Michael, if I can just jump in for one thing very quickly. So what's not very clear on here, though, is that the way that this is happening, I mean, so with the revenue projections, we took a somewhat conservative, we hope conservative enough approach, including 10% reductions and a lot of, like normally we expect to see an increase year over year. There's been a lot of reductions in our projections for revenue. And so, you know, the finance committee, the town administrator, the town finance director, the select board, we've all worked on trying to find additional revenue, one-time funds, which typically we don't like to do. I mean, nobody likes to pay for an operating budget with one-time expenses, free cash, things like that. But everybody has had the same objective of making sure that we try to keep as many people employed, provide as many services to the town and to the schools. And so one thing that's not usually in here is, you know, the only reason we have the revenue that we have here is because there's been a lot of talk and a lot of discussion on ways that we could add additional revenue into this to minimize a cut. I mean, we're going to talk about how we close a $672,000 gap. But if the town did not agree to put revenue back in there, our gap, I think, would have been something like 1.4 million, if I recall.
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Buckley. So absolutely, yeah. So there's a lot that goes into the revenue plan and the efforts to look at it creatively and find ways to free up additional revenue, you know, look at some reserve funding and free cash and savings and certain fixed costs, you know, has certainly got us to this place today. And it's a much better place than where we thought we would be, standing here prepared to make a budget vote just a short, you know, a few days ago, really. So absolutely. So now, if you look at the school operating budget, the number we're operating from is that $672,000 plus amount, the budget gap. So many of these items we've presented previously to the committee as we've updated the committee on the status of the budget. So certainly, the things that we would look to do first is eliminate some of the new positions that we were proposing in the FY '21 budget, many of which were, you know, part of our strategic plan, the NRPS 2021 document and some operational needs. So we had proposed the addition of an elementary teaching and learning coordinator for a little over $108,000. It was an administrative position to help provide curriculum alignment and leadership support across the elementary level. So that position would be eliminated. Again, it's a new position. We were looking to get a reading specialist to provide some additional academic support at the elementary level. That, again, is a new position. So we would defer, forego that position for a little bit more than $68,000. We were looking to add a Florida custodian and achieve some operational overtime savings. And that position would be eliminated, again, a new position for a little more than $20,000, when you minus the savings for overtime. We had a vacant position, a couple of vacant positions in central office, in the technology accounting, HR realm that we were looking to kind of combine into one position that would assist some of the support staff and various duties in central office. We would forego this new position for the amount of $65,000 and continue to do kind of how we've been operating. Then some of the items now below this list are positions that are sort of vacant due to retirements or resignations, there are many of which are academic teaching positions. So we would forego the replacement of these positions to achieve some savings. So there was a district-level academic teacher position that we would look not to fill next year. And then there was a position at the middle school, which we would also look not to fill to avoid any layoffs of existing personnel. We had added a line item to help support the technology, the one-to-one plan that we've achieved fully for the first time this year for grade seven through grade 12. We were looking to have an ongoing funds in our operating budget to replace those devices on an ongoing basis. We would forego that plan next year. That was a $60,000 new line item. So we would forego adding that. We would still be able to purchase these devices through the state grant, Airmark grant that we have. So it's not the worst thing that this is being foregone, but we'd have to certainly visit that in subsequent budget years, that this need. We had added an elementary grade level position at the elementary school. Looking at upcoming enrollment, we felt that this was needed. Looking at upcoming enrollment, we felt that this was needed. We would forego the, the hire of a new elementary grade level position for a little more than sixty-eight thousand dollars budget, budget figure. So that, that was sort of the first round of reductions that, that we had discussed as a committee and as an administrative team. The remaining items were, is additional items needed to, to narrow, narrow the gap. We have an opening in the director of facilities position, so we would, this proposal would delay the hiring or the appointment of that position from July one to September first to achieve savings. We would look, we have a vacancy in the student service department. So we would restructure that department, reallocate some duties of that department. What this really does is shift some, you know, team sharing responsibilities, our district coordination responsibilities to the, to the role of administrators and coordinators in the department. But that would save about a point five FTE position in the amount of approximately fifty thousand dollars. We've talked about the assistant superintendent, certainly someone that also oversees curriculum and teaching and learning throughout the entire district, a very much needed position. And this plan would forego the, or delay the, the hiring of that appointment from July one to September first to achieve savings of approximately twenty-five thousand dollars in that position. The last item on here that would essentially fully balance the budget is we have a vacancy in an academic teaching position at the high school. So we would, we would not fully replace that one point oh FTE vacancy, we would replace it. We would reduce that by point six and achieve some additional savings of a little over forty-one thousand dollars, so we would fill that at point four. There is some declining enrollment at the high school, which, which helps us achieve that somewhat. But, you know, you know, certainly, all of these items, you know, on this list are certainly, certainly challenging. But that being said, doing, doing this does achieve us to a balanced budget. I will say, none of these positions were certainly looked at lightly with, without a lot of deliberation and discussion by the administrators, by, you know, budget subcommittee members, by, you know, school committee at meetings in the past, at the finance planning team. When we approach this, as we always do, we look at what is going to be least harmful to the classroom, to the educational process and education for the students in North Reading. So we, we really tried to, you know, be as creative as we can to, to protect the areas in the classroom as well as not, you know, avoid a reduction to an existing staff member or personnel currently employed or planning to be employed next school year. And we felt that this, this proposal, although certainly not, not the ideal, not, not what we would like to, like to be in, in an ideal situation, it achieves the fact that it would avoid layoffs to existing, you know, personnel, both, you know, professional, you know, teaching staff and support staff and so forth that are working very hard in, in North Reading for next year. And we felt it, it also really is, you know, keeps the, the main, the, the highest priorities of, of the classroom and, and protecting the, the programs in, in North Reading that we've worked so hard to achieve. It's certainly not going to be easy. It's going to put some additional, you know, work on the part of, you know, many folks either at the administrative level or across the district in, in a variety of positions to, to make things continue to, to tick in, in a least harmful situation, but we, we feel we can, we can make, make this work and under the circumstances that we've all been dealt with over the last several weeks and, and, and the financial situation and the uncertainty, we feel like this is a, a best result and it, it does have a, the support of the full administrative, administrative team. The note at the bottom of this chart speaks to the fact that we may, through the Educational Cares, Cares Act, we may, the district will have a fiscal twenty-one grant coming in, coming into the district of a little more than fifty-six thousand dollars. We know that for, that's already been made public and the grant application is posted for fiscal twenty-one. We'll be working on that in the coming weeks. I believe it's due July first. But that is an area that we can look to maybe restore some of the items above this list, but at least an item or a position potentially above this list to, to minimize the, the impact of, of the reductions on this list. But, you know, certainly, you know, some difficult decisions and some difficult priorities had to be set in the creation of this list. We feel like this is a, you know, a least harmful situation for, for all involved as we look towards fiscal twenty-one. That being said, are there any questions? I know we've, I know we've, I know most of the folks, at least on the committee, have seen this list and so forth. But I just, I'll open up to questions before I move on into the presentation.
Okay, so why don't we go, no, nothing from Janine or Rich? Any member of the public has any questions, please feel, feel free to unmute yourself and ask as well. I will, I, I would just say a couple of quick things. I mean, just kind of reiterate that the last rounds of cuts that happened were really putting more, you know, more on the leadership. I mentioned it earlier about with Mrs. Conan, but also Mr. Connolly and Dr. Daley are really taking on a lot of additional responsibilities, especially over the summer by delaying certain positions. So really appreciate you guys doing that. The Cares Act, you mentioned this before, one thing that came up at Finance Planning Team was we also have to think about next year, what next year looks like. And there's going to be a lot of additional, you know, supplies that are needed, different things that are needed. We are working and, and perhaps, Mr. Connolly, you can mention, I don't know if you can talk, speak to this at all, but we are working with the town to try to put together a list of what is anticipated to be needed by the end of December so that possibly we could get some of that from a, a grant from the town as well, for the town as well.
Yep, yeah, absolutely. The next couple of slides speak to some budget conclusions and financial risks and where we go with maybe COVID nineteen. So, yeah, I'll definitely address that, but it absolutely is, it's a good point.
And, I mean, I guess just overall, like, I mean, when you look at it from snapshot, in, in lieu of where we're at right now and what we're seeing in neighboring communities, we're in a much better position and, and everybody understands that. At the same time, you know, we are losing positions. You know, we are losing positions that, you know, are, are important positions, you know, and this, you know, I don't think we can say that we're providing necessarily level services for next year. This is a much better budget than it could have been, but it is not what we hope to have year over year, you know? You know, it is something that we would like to have better, but we did want to prioritize keeping jobs as well. And we really worked very well this year with the select board and the finance committee to try to prioritize across the town, saving jobs and, you know, really appreciate the efforts that they've made to add revenue back in so that further cuts weren't made.
Right, absolutely.
Rich, you unmuted. Do you have a comment as well?
Uh, no, I don't.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Connolly.
Great, um, so some of the budget conclusions I just wanted to speak to kind of certainly high level, and I'll certainly get into some of the, the last bullet here addresses a little bit of what Chairman Buckley was just speaking to. But, you know, certainly, you know, given the circumstances, our, our main goal was, you know, certainly to, to meet our contractual obligations with employees and employee unions, this budget certainly allows us to do that. It does include the funds to meet all the standard operational fixed costs from either a building, you know, maintenance standpoint, utility standpoint, and does provide all the schools and departments, the educational materials needed at all the five schools and, and four campuses. So it, it does meet the both on the, the educational material, you know, standard materials that are needed and, and the fixed costs. It, it does allocate and has, has the funding to support those areas. It's been a priority, as Dr. Daley spoke to from the beginning, to certainly protect positions and not, you know, lay off existing staff, so it is not including layoffs for existing staff members currently employed by the school district. Unfortunately, as we, as you just saw from the previous list, it does not fill a few academic teaching positions due to some retirements. It does delay the appointments of, again, two key administrative positions, the assistant superintendent and the director of facilities. So we'll certainly, you know, be hard at work over the summer as to look to, just kind of to fill that, that void of, of not having those positions a little bit longer. But we do feel to the greatest extent possible, it does protect the, the edge, the key in the current educational programs and services that are in the classroom. So we really try hard to, to minimize the, the impact in, in this classroom that the, the student would, would experience. It has, as Chair, Chairman Buckley alluded to, what's, what's certainly not, not in the budget, but it doesn't mean that we haven't, we're not aware of it, we're not attuned to it. And we haven't had conversations as a committee and as a community with town officials and select board and finance planning team. It does not include additional costs that may be necessary in sort of what I'm referring to as a post-COVID nineteen environment, including additional funding that may be for technology, for remote learning, for professional development and training, for additional cleaning services, additional costs that may be necessary for our regular bus transportation, student support services and academic support needs for students, school lunch, nursing supplies, potential personal equipment and, and cleaning materials and potential, potentially the need for small capital investments and items related to COVID nineteen. So these are all areas that we've been putting our heads together, we've been making lists, we've been looking at the guidance by the state, by the governor, by our various affiliations, by the commissioner of education, that guidance continues to come out. I know Dr. Daley and myself and other administrators are, are on almost daily conference calls with, with colleagues and with various associations from across the state that are talking about guidance and things to think about. So we know there's going to be additional costs. And the town is certainly working with the appropriate, you know, programs from the federal government level to, to figure out how, how those funds would flow into North Reading. We, we do know there's going to be funds available for both the town and for the school and, you know, through forms of sort of reimbursement for these types of expenses as they arise. So we're aware of it and, and we do expect there'll be a level of funding available for these types of expenses. Before I get to a potential motion and, and final questions, the final thoughts, you know, I kind of present a slide similar to this, at least I have for the last couple of years, but every budget has some inherent risks involved. And there's certainly some risks that exist in this budget, maybe more so that has in the past because of everything that has been, been going on, there's certainly more uncertainty out there than, than we've ever faced with. So like any, any school department budget, there's always that chance for additional outside or, or change in, in special education placements, which could come with increased costs. We certainly, you certainly process some, some refunds to, to parents through special, special, through a variety of special, special revenue accounts or revolving accounts and the areas of athletics, kindergarten, pre-K and busing. So in some sense, there's less reserves available. But as Chairman Buckley alluded to earlier, I've been very touched and quite amazed with the level of generosity by, you'll see later in the meeting, by many of the parents that have opted to donate a refund amount in many of these optional programs that would have been due to them, keep that back in the district, help, help support these costs going forward to help minimize any of this type, this, this impact. So that's certainly been, been great to see. It's absolutely has been a collaborative team approach right from the, the, the select board and the top town officials, you know, right, right down to, to certainly parents and staff and everyone involved. So like, as always been, we, we estimate the, a level of a teacher attrition in, in savings for just that turnover. So there's always, that may not be realized. It's, we never know the complete impact of the winter months and the snow and ice costs, so that's always difficult to predict. And then obviously, the state budget, you know, we're certainly dealing with a huge level of uncertainty. We think as Doc, as Chairman Buckley alluded to earlier, that we've, we've made the appropriate adjustments on the revenue side, but there's always a chance there there could be further reductions when we get into fiscal year twenty-one, known as NRC cuts potentially, which could impact some of the, the state revenue coming in through programs like the special education circuit breaker account, chapter seventy or local aid. The food service program, you know, certainly, uh, one of the more financial challenges with the, the loss of revenue over the last several weeks and again, an area of uncertainty, it, it's, it's difficult to predict from year to year anyway, and certainly with the impact of COVID nineteen and what a food service program may look like, it, it's, there's certainly some uncertainty there as well. And then with the additional costs needed, as I just spoke to, to address new guidelines and requirements that we're watching very closely for a variety of educational and operational items, will certainly be necessary that are not reflected in our operating budget, but the good thing is, is it, it appears that we will have some, some funding available to, to move forward on those items. So those are some of the risks that I think we should, you know, I'll be aware of. I think most of us have become aware that there's, there's, these risks do exist with any school department budget. And I think, you know, at this point, I think we would be prepared to, to take a, take a vote this evening and adopt a, a final fiscal year twenty-one school operating budget of thirty-two million, five hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars. This represents an increase of two point four percent or seven hundred sixty-nine thousand and five dollars over fiscal year twenty. So that, again, and I just, you know, before we get to the potential motion, final questions, do you want to just offer my, my thank yous for the support of the entire community, you know, starting with certainly the, the five school committee members, the five select board members, members of the finance committee, members of the finance planning team, the town administrator, Michael Gilberto, town finance director, Elizabeth Rourke, members of our, our colleagues on the administrative council, the, the five school principals and Cynthia Conan and, and Dan Downs and folks have really through, have really stepped up and, and done this virtually and had these tough conversations and put, or put our heads together to come up with ideas and to try to, to make this all work and, and, as I said, minimize any impact on the educational experience. And then the students, the faculty and staff, they've all continued to step up in some very challenging times to certainly adapt to, to a different way of education, remote learning. And we saw earlier this evening, some of the, the give backs that many of our, our staff members have, have done to help this cause that you know, help, help the budget situation. And then certainly the citizens of North Reading and, and parents. You know, our booster and support groups do amazing things, the, the PTO, parent associations and PTOs and, and athletic support groups and music boosters and, and so many folks that we rely on so much to, to, to make the educational experience is what it is, continue to step up during these difficult times. And, and the whole community is, it's really been a team-wide effort this year. So I, I just want to, one more time, offer my, my thank you for everyone's support.
And thank you, Mike and Patrick as well, for the work that you guys have done. The only thing I would add here very quickly is we are making projections. Usually we have a state budget and we have, revenues are a little bit more certain. And so we, we are, we are hoping that the state budget comes in, you know, where, where we're looking for. And, and some people might know, notice that many communities are voting of what they're calling a one-twelfth budget, which is just one-twelfth of the current year budget. We act, we thought that because even though it's not, not a great year, it's still an increase of two point four percent over last year. And the finance planning team, we really thought it was important to try to move this forward and get a budget voted this year. And so we are still going to be trying to move forward with a town meeting at the end of the month because that's, would be the deadline to, you know, get this approved. So we are going to try to have a town meeting at the end of the month to, to, you know, select board's talking about trying to trim down the warrant articles there, but there, there is a goal here to, you know, be able to accept this on town in, in, at the end of June so that we can move forward and not have to do a one-twelfth budget. Okay, any other comments or discussion or questions on the budget? If not, I would ask maybe Mr. McGowan if you wouldn't mind doing a, the budget motion?
Sure, I, it's, it's made so easy for me here. I move that the school committee approve and hereby adopt the final fiscal year twenty-one school operating budget of thirty-two million, five hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars, representing an increase of two point four percent or seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand and five dollars over fiscal year. representing an increase of two point four percent or seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand and five dollars over fiscal year twenty.
I will second that with a comment of Michael, thank you so much. And Patrick, I know a lot of work goes into this, so thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? We'll take a vote. Roll call. Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Oh, all right.
Is that an aye?
That is an aye.
I'm an aye as well. Passes three to zero. Congratulations. Dr. Daley, you have your first budget.
I thank, I echo everyone's thanks, especially to our our committee that meets year round. I don't know that everyone in town understands how our finance planning team meets. Um, starting way back before I was even superintendent, you folks have been meeting and preparing this budget um, to come into this wonderful group of people that work so hard to to do what's best for for the town and for the students. And especially, uh, you know, Janine and Scott being members of that team, Diana being a member of the the finance group as well, and then Michael especially, all the work you do, Michael, it's second to none. And, you know, I think we can, i- in times when the headlines for other towns are are very different than ours, um, I feel like we've been able to continue to steer the ship in the right direction. We're not quite moving as far as we would hope and and as our vision, you know, gets back on track, I'd like to pick those pieces up, but I really thank you for keeping us in a place where we can keep moving forward in these very challenging times. So thank you, everyone.
Okay, excellent. Okay, we're going to move on to minutes. Now, it mentions here, May eighteenth, minutes for the regular session and the executive session. I didn't see the executive session and did we vote those last meeting?
Those were included. There was a separate, there was a separate attachment for the executive session.
Well, they they it must have looked so great to me that I forgot about it. Um.
Well, if you don't, I can resend it.
No, it's fine. Mrs. Imbrionne, if you want to, um, lead us in the minutes for the May eighteenth regular session first. You're muted, so you do have to unmute for it.
Good call. You saw my mouth movement and not much happened. Gotcha. Um, I make a motion to accept the May eighteenth open session, uh, minutes as uh, as written.
Hold second.
Uh, any discussion? Roll call. Janine?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Passes three, zero. And on the executive session?
I will make a motion to accept the minutes as written on May or for May eighteenth executive session.
Hold second.
Uh, roll call vote. Janine?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Thank you, everyone. We move to the budget update. Mr. Connolly?
Great, thank you. So in your packet this evening, uh, was the FY, wasn't FY twenty budget update, which essentially reflects financial activity through the end of May, just about the end of May. Um, so as you can imagine, we've certainly been dealing with a lot of, you know, unforeseen circumstances and 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 challenges uh, with with this statewide school closure and the COVID nineteen virus. So we've certainly had to kind of pivot and 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 address some of the 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 changes to the budget. Um. But, you know, I think it's fair to say, as soon as the the school closure went into to place, um, you know, the district immediately began to to sort of put measures in place to try to reduce costs and and save, you know, monies in the in the following in as many areas as we could identify, you know, certainly, you know, some of these savings resulted in, you know, supplies and materials, utility costs, you know, building maintenance services, um, some contractual items that we were able to kind of delay or put on hold when when the school closure went into place. We certainly also experienced some savings on the salary, uh, line items, which included substitute costs, spring coaches pay, um, some overtime costs for, you know, consensual overtime costs and so forth. Um, all all of these savings and the measures that were put into place certainly helped us achieve our, one of our highest levels of priorities, which was to ensure that um, all professional and support staff continue to, uh, you know, receive their regular base wages throughout the end of the year as we sort of um, had to react to the the school closure and 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 institute a new way of of doing business, um, and remote learning and so forth. So um, I think we reacted pretty quickly to achieve the savings that we were able to achieve when when some of the buildings were were closed down um, to allow us to to achieve some of the the additional costs that that we we were faced with with, um, some loss of revenue, with the need to issue some some refunds and some of our planned um, revolving accounts for our some of our optional programs that I spoke of earlier and to try to keep, um, certainly services occurring and and staff, staff being paid and as minimize that impact as much much as we could. So we were, we were, we're happy that we've been able to achieve that. Um, you know, the revenue, the revenue picture, as we all know, continues to be uncertain and um, there are many anticipated new expenses that will arise. Um, so we are certainly putting those lists together and and seeing what can be done um, as to prepare as best we can for for the future and kind of the the new environment that we will be in. Um, but I'm happy to report that I think because of the immediate immediate action taken and our just ongoing vigilance in respect to our daily operations, as well as the support of all of our employee unions and staff, that I do feel like we are in in solid financial standing to close out this this current fiscal year. And as we've said, we've looked to kind of leverage any areas of savings as possible to to help with the financial uncertainty and the budget gap moving forward into fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Um, so with that being said, are there any questions, um, on the on the budget?
Janine, any questions? No. Rich, any questions? No, and I I had none either. Thank you, Michael.
Great, thank you.
Do you want to continue on the student?
Oh, yes, thank you. There was a, there was a supplemental, uh, report, um, student activity quarterly report. So as you know, I've been presenting these at the end of each quarter. Um, so this is, we're a little bit behind with everything going on, but we were able to officially certify and reconcile balances um, through the end of quarter three, which reflects activity through March thirty-first, twenty twenty. So as we, it's been typical of these reports, I I include the certified reconciled quarterly account balances that this is the bank account balances that we've reconciled with our with our accounting system and control accounts with the district. And then I've also listed the sub-account quarterly account balances at the middle school and the high school with the various active student clubs and activities. Um, so I think this is, you know, we're following the our our policies and our procedures and, um, and, you know, audit recommendations to to present and and sort of certify these balances on a quarterly basis. So what's reflected in the report is the the five certified balances for the five accounts at the five schools and the various sub-account balances for those schools, the high school and the middle school that have that have those, um, sub-accounts as well. So um, I'm happy to report that I think things continue to be in good shape and and that we continue to, um, to to monitor and and to reconcile these balances, um, you know, just despite what's what's been happening and, um. I certainly appreciate the work of of my staff, particularly Sabita, Sabita Pie, who's been hard at work, um, in, you know, in doing this, a lot of this remotely to 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 make sure that these these accounts stay in good shape. Any questions on the student activity report?
Rich, question?
I was just going to ask a general question, Michael. Um. In my company, we sort of, this is obviously just a bit of an estimate, but we, we're all working remotely and we we sort of peg ourselves at being at about ninety percent efficiency. And that's obviously, we're just kind of taking a stab at it, but it feels about right. We're getting everything that, do you have a sense of where you guys are at in in that, you know, with all this remote work that you've been doing, um, uh, how close to full efficiency you've been able to maintain?
Yeah, it's a, it's a very good question. And quite honestly, I've been pleasantly surprised at how well, um, you know, the business office and central office folks have responded to, um, you know, this this change in work culture and and change in work environment and doing things remotely and um, you know, I I think we've really been able to stay on top of all, um, you know, duties and responsibilities, um, you know, maybe not as certainly as as efficiently as we would if we were all together and having all the resources and the scanning and the efficiency of of the technology right at our fingertips. We've had to kind of do things a little bit differently and I think it probably takes things, us a little bit longer to do something than that it would take if we were all there together on our normal workstation. Um, but, you know, that being said, I think people have really stepped up in these circumstances. And I I've been really impressed with uh, how well everyone has done that and and almost hasn't missed a beat. And, you know, we had never missed a deadline with with payroll, with accounts payable warrants. And, uh, the fact that we had the, I think the fact that we've had DocuSign and that was already up and running in 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 business as usual with the electronic signature process with the school committee, with each of you and in our office. Um, you know, just following the daily emails from our listserv, you know, a lot of districts that didn't have that, you know, really, really lost a lot of, um, efficiency. They didn't, they with getting really behind on invoices and so forth. And I think we we just kept going almost as business as usual and getting those to you. Although I think it was more work on our end to to scan or take pictures and get those into a format that um, you'd be able to to monitor and review. So, yeah, I think how I'm standing, ninety percent is probably a good number, you know, just thinking off, off thinking about it. Um, but we really haven't, haven't missed a deadline or haven't missed a an important duty that I can think of to, uh, to date.
If I could just, from the operation standpoint, I would agree. Um, there really was no downtime and people were coming in even to sort of physical mail um, and to get things assigned. And then so much of it transitioned smoothly to electronic. Um, and I think people in some ways are working harder because they don't have the conveniences of the office. And so they've done a great job. I can't necessarily pinpoint that number on the student learning side. I I don't want to be confused. I I'm, because I don't want to fall for ninety percent of the curriculum or ninety percent, you know, but I think the operations is certainly ninety percent. I think the 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 curriculum is high as well and higher than many others too. I I I need a little more data to to give you a number close to ninety, but I think we're doing very well there. But certainly on the operations side, I would agree.
Rich, are you going to make a motion to cut their salaries by ten percent now?
Uh, no.
Any other questions for Mr. Connolly? Thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. Connolly. Uh, staffing, no updates right now, Dr. Daley?
Uh, not at this time. We'll, we'll probably provide more at our, our next meeting.
Okay, and now we are very fortunate to have a long period to accept donations because we have had a lot of donations. And so I'll turn it over to Mr. McGowan.
And I'll take the town's leave to, uh, we're going to read every name on these, on these lists, and, uh, I think it's well deserved. So, uh, bear with me and, uh, for those whose names I mispronounce, I'll give a blanket, uh, apology now. Um, I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude donation amounts totaling two thousand seventy-five dollars from full and half-day pre-kindergarten parents on the above list who opted to donate their refund amount back to the school district to help support costs associated with the full and half-day pre-kindergarten program. They are Priscilla and Greg Arsenal, Lauren and David Cook, Jennifer and Patrick McGee, Kimberly and Mark Begley, and Michelle and Michael Cooper.
I will second.
Okay. Yes, thank you all very much for this. Um, take a roll call vote. Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Passes three to zero. Thank you.
I moved that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude donation amounts totaling ten thousand three hundred dollars from full-day kindergarten parents in the attached list who opted to donate their refund amount back to the school district to help support costs associated with the full-day kindergarten program. They are Meredith, Meredith Wolf, Sarah Allen McGoldrick, Andrea Spano, Kenneth Weigel, Heather Cur- uh, Curly's, Katie and Curtis, Jennifer Callahan, Kimberly Lucas, Mary Ann Bizer, Courtney Christine, Katie Taylor, Jessica Lobello, Cindy Pettis, Suzanne Burnham, Priyakas Atalas, Trupi Gupta, Veronica Musante, Efranza Casada, Melissa Fritz, Kara Heron, Lisa Moran, Lisa Spear, Kelly Gramolini, James Cambry, James Cambry again, Kristen Turcot, Andrea Bagan, uh, Robert Fishman and Jennifer Socia Sawyer.
I will second, and thank goodness you do the donations.
Yes, excellent job reading, Rich. Um, no, again, and then this one in particular, just, I mean, it it stinks that we have to pay for full-day kindergarten to begin with, but for the generosity of then, you know, donating that money back is just really above and beyond. So thank you to those parents. Um. So roll call vote. Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Passes three to zero.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude donation amounts totaling nine thousand ninety-five dollars from North Reading's parents on the attached list who opted to donate their refund amount back to school district to help support costs associated with the bus transportation contract. Kristen Abruzi, Masima Sia, Siobhan Sturro, Tracy Barbara, Laura Patalas, Kimberly Begley, Christina Benneke, Muta Bosley, Kara Antonacci, Lee Rosena, Nancy Butler, Erin Carlson, Don Craig, Chris Cullen, Dorothy Curran, Keith Daley, Bridget Davis, Elena DeAngelis, Christina Dimitri, Yvaleen Sariano, Jessica Donaldson, Linda Emery, Clarissa Felicia, Anderson Ferreira, Rachel Fisher, Janet Flores, Teresa Willett, Amanda Forten, John Garber, Melissa Rue, Heather Griffin, Lynn Hannan, Andrea Hansen, Matthew Higgins, Lee Hoadley, Tracy Joyce, Daniel Kennedy, Stephanie Koenig, Rebecca Cooper, Julie Koftee, Kim Colodziet- Colodziet- Colodzietzak. Sorry, I tried to get that one right. Uh, Nancy Butler, Melissa Ladue, uh, Michael Deskuus, Guthrie Meyer, Kate Manzanelli, Colleen McFane, Beth McCall, Christina McCormick, Jennifer McNeil, Kathleen McTeague, Anya Mills, Barbara Surlim, Mitazov, Rebecca Lo, Mary Ann Murray, Jeanette Murray, Andy Faro, Amy Ottaviano, Nicole Papasopaso, Carmine Petrosino, Nicole Pierce, Mabel Fang, Dan Quinn, Jenny Romanci, Gina Rooney, Elizabeth Rydell, John Sarno, Caitlin Scott, Iacudis Recomp, uh, Holly Stun- Staniich, Colleen Steinmeier. Scroll down here. Andrew Stepson, Andrew Stevens, Jane Stevenson, Antonia Stone, Stephanie Tanyan, Gail Tenney, Janet Stevenson, Jennifer Thompson, Courtney Park, Jennifer Vant, Shawna Wagner, Julie Walsh, Joyce Wells, Andrew Street and William Burkmire. Thank you.
I will second that.
Excellent. Um, roll call vote. Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Read a zero.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of six hundred dollars from North Reading High School parents on the above list who opted not to receive the spring user fee refund due to them and donated the amount back to the athletic department in the high school. And that's, uh, Iacudis Recomp and Philip and Carolyn Coppola.
I will second that.
Didn't we vote this one already?
I think we did. Yeah, I had had this.
Oh, yes, it's May eighteenth on that, yeah.
Yes.
I think we did vote that one already. So, uh, so Michael, I don't think we need to vote on this one again. I don't want to double count something.
Definitely.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think I think, um, this one should have gotten taken out. Sorry about that. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because we, we just approved the minutes.
Okay. Withdraws the motion. And.
I has.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude donation amounts totaling four hundred and ninety-nine dollars from before-school childcare parents on the above list who opted to donate their refund amount back to the school district to help support costs associated with the before-school ch- childcare program. Robert Fishman, Lisa Moran, Scott Pierthall, Kristen Abruzi, Darcey Brewster.
I will second that one.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, I'll do a roll call vote. Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Passes three to zero.
And there were some tacked on to the very end of our package, I, uh, so I'm going to jump to those.
Yes, I saw that.
Quick ones, one of the lists, let's see. Um, I move that the school committee votes accept with gratitude a donation of one hundred dollars from Mr. and Mrs. Jennings who opted not to receive the full spring user uh, fee refund due to them. not to receive the full spring user fee refund due to them and donate the amount back to the athletic department at the high school.
I second.
Okay, I, any discussion? All those in favor? I'll do a roll call vote, Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Passes three, zero.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude donation amounts totaling four hundred and ninety-nine dollars from before-school childcare parents who opted to donate their refund amount back to the school district.
Is this, I think this is the same one, same one.
I think there was a couple of repeats at the end. I think there's only one left remaining that's not a repeat, and it's the one from Walmart.
Yeah, sorry, when they printed the packet, it printed twice. I'm sorry about that.
Okay, yep, you're right. That's okay. I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of one thousand dollars from Walmart to be used as the district fund.
Second.
Okay, that was great to see community businesses helping us. Roll call vote, Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Passes three to zero. Thank you very much, Mr. McGowan. Okay, so where are we at here? We're at subcommittee updates, and the only subcommittee is finance planning team. We met May twenty-eighth, we met June eighth, we met at five o'clock today. In terms of an update, I think it's pretty simple. We worked on the budget more than anything, and, you know, we were able to do the work that we talked about already. Only other updates are, as I mentioned, town meeting we're still trying to have at the end of the month. Most likely, I think the vote on the special town meeting for the turkey farm is going to be moved to a later time, and we're gonna try to minimize many things on the warrant. One thing that is, one thing that is going to be on there, and Michael, did you want to talk at all about, do you want to bring up at all the solar discussion? Because I think the select board's gonna be talking about it.
Yeah, I can definitely provide an update to the committee so everyone's aware. So as you know, we have had the solar RFP out in advertisements. The due date for that was Friday, May twenty-second, so those bids proposals came in about a week ago, just before the Memorial Day weekend. So we spent the majority of this week reviewing those. We got four proposals from a variety of different vendors and developers, one of which didn't meet the minimum requirements, and it was kind of incomplete packets, so one was disqualified. So we got three complete proposals. It does appear that the most advantageous proposal, you know, certainly could essentially yield, you know, a little more than a hundred and two thousand dollars of an operating lease revenue, you know, back to the school district on an annual basis for twenty years. So that was, right now, the most advantageous proposal. We're continuing to review all the documents. There's a lot to review, and we're ranking the proposals and doing everything that we need to do, but certainly, you know, the revenue, I think, is such that it's certainly worth pursuing and considering. The project does require the necessity of a few town meeting warrant articles to allow us to officially enter into a signed contract agreement. So the select board is discussing those. There's been conversation whether or not they, in the focus of reducing the articles for the most necessity and needed projects, would potentially delay this one to the fall. I certainly advocated to the finance planning team members and to Michael Givernell that they consider not doing that and keeping those warrant articles on the June town meeting. Hopefully, with a brief presentation and some information, we can get the information out there that's needed, and it doesn't have to be a lengthy discussion. Essentially, there was four warrant articles that you may recall originally approved by the committee back in April, based on this project. One of such was an article that would essentially require the, was necessary for us to just approve the transfer of the middle school and the high school roof, and the potential of the adjacent ground area for this purpose, other than its intended purpose, which is obviously education, and allow us to get into sort of a twenty-year lease-type agreement with a developer. So that's kind of the purpose of the first warrant article. The second was one that doesn't appear to be something that's advantageous for us to do, based on the bidders that did propose this alternative option, which would be us actually attempting to use part of the energy from the array, from the solar array, and enter into sort of a three-way power purchasing agreement with our utility company, RMLD, the developer, and us. And based on what's being proposed, the difference, the incremental difference of the price that we would get, that we're already getting from RMLD, is not significant that it would, in the size of the array, that it would not yield a huge amount of savings. So that's what we're initially showing. So it doesn't look like it's advantageous to pursue that, and we would need RMLD to kind of be involved in that for us to firm up what that savings would be, but it doesn't look like we would pursue those types of proposals. The third option is necessary to enter into a payment in lieu of taxes. So the array would have an assessed value, and there would be a payment in lieu of taxes that would need to be negotiated with the town assessor. So there's an article that would require approval at town meeting for us to go ahead and negotiate that payment amount with the recommended developer or the awarded developer. We're not talking a huge amount of money here, but there would be an annual payment in lieu of taxes. So that, there's an article that's required for that. And then the fourth warrant article was just for us to establish a revolving account to accept the lease payments for this purpose, and have the town establish that revolving account, have the lease payments go into that revolving account to offset school, school energy costs under the law that allows us to do that. So it looks like, based on the proposals that we've analyzed, three or four of those would be necessary for us to move forward and try to negotiate a contract eventually with the awarding developer. Is there any questions on that?
And my only question, so two things, Michael. First, are we going to distribute to the committee, or are we gonna have a smaller committee to look through those proposals as we did with the LED?
Yeah, so right now, I'll tell you where we're at. So we actually have four folks that are involved in that process. We have our consultant, who's well-versed in analyzing these types of proposals across the state, that we've kind of engaged to help us both do the RFP, evaluate the proposals, and help us enter into a contract should we do so. So the consultant is currently reviewing the proposals on our behalf. It's myself, it's Wayne Hardaker, and then Kathy O'Connell, the middle school principal, since certainly involves the middle school, high school, has volunteered to be on this committee. So what we're attempting to do is go through the proposals, rank them, tabulate them, make sure that those four folks are all on the same page of who we think the most advantageous proposal is. And then what I could do in the future is include, send the proposals out to everyone if they want to see it, although there's a ton of documents. Most of it was sort of shared hard drive electronically to us. But I could provide the summary-level doc information that I'm gonna be getting from the consultant. That's gonna include the pricing tabulations in the ranking, the non-price ranking, and get that to each of the committee for a presentation on June twenty-second, potentially.
That'd be great. That'd be great. And then, second thing is, the select board is requesting that when this meeting's over, if you have time to jump in there, I asked Mr. Givernell if he would email you and me both the link. I'll join as well. I don't know if you have ten minutes or whatever, but they're just asking if you could still do that.
Sure.
Okay.
And that to me as well, Mr. Buckley, that'd be great.
Okay, absolutely. For the administrative report, Dr. Daly, anything?
Yes, and thank you again. I can't tell you how grateful I am to have Anne Lindell and others back in the office. I tried so hard to print all those lists and to make all the changes, and then I guess, so the second time those donations are in there, they're in there correctly, but the first package, I guess, still was there as part of what I copied. So I apologize. Great job reading all those names, Mr. McGowan. That's always difficult. I know that's always a challenge at graduation to make sure you get everyone in there correctly, and you did a great job. So thank you. But thank you to all those, those great number of people that, you know, I tried to send a thank you to people as they were coming in, but it really is a tremendous outpouring of support from our community, and I appreciate the idea and also the donations and the work that Michael's done. My administrative report tonight really is just another thank you to Michael and to celebrate another foundation grant that Michael put in for. There's so many different webinars and grant opportunities that he and I are doing constantly and trying to keep on top of. And so this one is the Help Feed School Kids Now grant, in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars that we're gonna be receiving. In addition to the grant, we also will be receiving two professional sealing machines that will help keep food safe and secure for students that are receiving them. So this is just more good news, in addition to the other grants that we received to help support our programs to keep our children well-fed during this time of closure and remote learning. So again, thank you, Michael. Thank you to our food service at Chartwells and Anna McGovern and everyone working in that process. It's been great, and this is gonna help us out as well. So thank you.
Great, thank you.
Sorry, I was actually just looking up the select board information myself. I think I have the thing I can send to you guys.
Yeah, I think I have it here as well. It's the seven, is it a seven-thirty open session?
I think that's what I'm planning on going into.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Correspondence, any correspondence after Daly?
Not at this time.
Future business, we have two to be determined school improvement plans on June twenty-second. Is that correct?
That'll be a virtual meeting as well.
Yep, June twenty-ninth, an executive session before town meeting. There's a chance, just so everybody knows, there's a chance that it might end up being June twenty-seventh. It looks like town meeting could be an outdoor on Saturday, June twenty-seventh. So for the committee members, just to mark their calendars, I don't know what, that was being determined tonight at the select board meeting.
There's a little bit in flux there, yep.
Yeah, and then July twenty-second, we'll have a meeting where we're going over the superintendent's evaluation. Again, location to be determined, probably a virtual again. And that's all I have. Does anybody have any other events or any other things to discuss? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to dismiss, adjourn?
I will so move.
I will second.
Okay, roll call vote on that, Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Thank you, everybody. And Dr. Daly and Michael, I'm gonna try to join the select board meeting now.
Okay, folks, have a great night.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.